Call a meeting to order is the meeting of the Hampden Board Select for the Board of Health being held at Town House Artarium, January tenth, twenty twenty-two, six P M. This meeting is being conducted in person and we're only using video conference technology as approved by the Governor in March twenty twenty. Please stand before the floor.
We give to the United States of America, to the other states, one nation under God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Is anyone in the meeting? Getting down and shaking their hands, right? We continue real quickly, minutes for December seventh.
Oh, fifteen, ten.
Yes.
The first line, you can just change it rather than less than, make it all. Or merely something like that.
I, I, okay.
Do you have a copy?
Yeah, I'll write it, I'll write it.
Okay. Thank you. So those are the ones that I did not take. Correct?
Yep.
December seventh.
But whatever, write in what, what you would like if you wanted to.
Okay, change, no, sorry, second, second part. No, the part there about, not as well, pardon me.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Also, that should be more.
The reason.
Of which, of which five thousand will go to conservation fund or something like that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
After the total revenue for the town of which five thousand will go to the conservation fund. Not. By the way, I won't recommend it.
Oh, I know the intent of that, if you just make a note.
Yeah, okay.
Vote for approval. Sorry, going forward. Uh, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
The only thing I see is, stretching the committee team. It says, uh, Carol has two who's on it. Believe it to me, it's been on from the fourth, as well as the sixth.
Voice.
Well, the discussion, I think. Not having it in front of me, thinking maybe it was discussed a couple of different times. I don't.
They want us to superpendence.
Oh, yeah.
I think the first one was more like school report.
The minister, December thirteenth.
All favors. December twenty, twenty twenty-one.
The town. Sure. Contact the county. Comments. Didn't we offer that a lot to go ahead and why?
Yes.
Did that mean the minister, that was a, you know, the question.
I thought that was the, the meeting.
Well, let's see.
It's got to be a recommendation to her. Otherwise, it's just discussed.
Yeah.
Was that, was that my meeting or Jane's?
Yeah, when Bob mentioned the Lucas thing at the end, I think we should say the board agreed with his recommendations to approve the work. And I think Bobby also said it was going to be reversible.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And then. Where do you have money for?
We'll do, prove December twenty. Savers. Advisory Committee. Law. Okay. Right here to set some parameters for the legislative.
Certainly discuss it. Yeah.
His thoughts?
Well, I think as everybody knows, inflation is raging. And, um. Have to prepare a budget with some anticipated salary lines in it. Well, as we do that, and we ask the departments to prepare their budgets, given the guidance in terms of what it is that we're looking for. Advisory as a committee hasn't discussed it. We do not have an advisory position. Anything that we say are individual opinions tonight. Certainly. Certainly, uh, comfortable expressing my opinions, I'm sure Heather and Carol are as well.
Kathy's on.
Oh, Kathy. So, I mean, that's, that's where we stand as advisory. We need to get people some guidance and.
Well, I just, kind of, it would be helpful to clarify, maybe, but could do this is to, the, just the new process in terms of the salary chart and, you know, what the approach is that we, you know, came up with what I know was one or two years ago, just so we all have the same understanding of, kind of, you know, that.
My understanding is that the decision la- last year was a step every other year. And then the step would be two percent, so essentially one percent a year.
And that's based on tenure?
And, and yes, the, the step system. The grade, the grade system is based on, upon estimate of skills, the step system is based upon ten.
And I don't think anybody's suggesting that we change that.
Yeah.
I think we're comfortable keeping that in place. It's really just a question of what, what cola we put on top of that.
Yes.
And is this, this is a year where there's not a step? Did we, last, we got everybody?
Doesn't work that way. The steps are based on people's seniority. So about half the people get a step every other year. When they hit even number of years of service, they get a step.
So it's staggered almost.
Yeah. I mean, it comes out to one percent a year for longevity, but, uh, it's, you know, the bump is uneven depending on. And it, and it goes down when we replace people. You know, we've had some turnover, so we're not going to have to, we're not going to bear that burden because they start back at zeros for step one. Last year, because we had traditionally done raises in the two and a half percent rate area, you gave every, you gave the steps plus, uh. Was it one or one and a half percent? One and a half percent. So the entire chart was factored up one and a half percent. And then individuals went by their grade and step depending on the job.
Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me? I'm sorry. It's Catherine Pesolano, and I've been in close contact with, um, two teachers that I work with who have tested positive for COVID. I have a question. Is there any chance that we can get a hard copy of the new employee handbook? So I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, things you are explaining are spelled out in the employee handbook that you just published?
We haven't published it yet. Uh, the selectmen have a redline copy. I have it tentatively on the agenda for next Monday.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, uh, Mr. Petullo, I didn't mean to cut you off there. I just have, just thought it might have been explained in, you know, the employee handbook.
I haven't seen it documented anywhere.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know, throw some numbers. I, I have emailed folks, you know, in anticipation of the meeting, saying that this year the social security cost of living is five point nine percent, and which is, you know, beyond anything they've done, I think, in like forty years. So it is, to those early point, things are a little mad right now. And I did look in the last few years. Last year was one point three, the year before that was one point six, and twenty eighteen was two point. Just to give a context and perspective on, you know, what the history has been, that's for social security benefits. Not necessarily what the count is tied to, but it just gives you what the market is doing.
Yeah, they're giving two or three times what they've given in recent years.
Right.
They believe it's a real, the inflation's a real number.
Wish we could really see where those inflation numbers were gonna go over the long run.
Well.
They keep saying a transitory inflation. Is it, is it gonna be that?
It's not.
No.
No.
Yeah. No, we're talking, we're talking in numbers in the six, seven percent range at least. So, and I don't think we're.
The numbers that I'm seeing are actually higher than that.
Yeah.
Looking at wholesale numbers and the numbers are all higher than that.
So if you, if, you know, if, let's say that we were going to use seven percent as the number of inflation is. If you give four or five, and inflation is transitory, then you don't have to do much next year. You know, so, uh, I don't think anybody's suggesting we can bump in one year. To the nine percent wholesale level, but if, you know, you've got to make a conscious effort to try to do that. Uh, if I take a, if I can take a second to refresh, I think I sent most of you the numbers here. The, uh, the COLA affects about one point three million dollars in salary. So one per, every one percent increment is thirteen thousand seventy-five dollars. In addition to that, up to one point three million, uh, sixty-nine percent are, uh, kind of retirement people. So at that rate, uh, that adds another thirty-one fifty-five, so sixteen to thirty is the number for one percent bump. So five percent says is eighty thousand dollars, to give you an idea of magnitude of decision you're making.
So the one point three million is not inclusive of bargain people or is this?
That is correct. It is not contracted people. It's the Collins people plus the firemen plus, there's a couple of people that are affected by what you do to COLA. Everybody's affected, but it does, it's not the highway, it's not the, not the police, it's none of those.
And the problem with this, this is the problem with inflation. Is, uh, as we increase the tax bill, we're pushing this on to the taxpayers and it creates this.
Inflation, right.
You know, it, it doesn't make it go away, it just transfers it to someone else. So I, I mean, to Craig's point, I mean, I don't, I don't think realistically that we can look beyond three to five years. And even, even that seems like a very remote horizon at this point. But certainly for the next couple of years, in my opinion, this inflation's not going anywhere. I think it's gonna go up. Based on the things that I'm seeing, I, I think inflation's gonna go up. Especially if, if the next spending bill goes through and more money gets pumped into.
Word of the summer too.
Yeah. And the Fed apparently agrees. I heard speculation in the weekend that they're looking for, perhaps, uh, to raise interest rates three times in, in calendar twenty-two. And, you know, we spent a lot of money and a lot of time with the Collins report trying to make the salaries equitable between other similar communities. So I would hate to lose that work because, you know, if we're short sighted here.
Well. So. Okay, so this is, this is a. Uh, I asked Dick what the, what the premiums or insurance brands were. And the lowest premium is seven hundred and eighty-one dollars a month. And so right now, last year, last year, and I was in the system, uh, putting in sixty percent, but they were paying three hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. So when we begin paying thirty percent of the life insurance, that essentially puts eighteen hundred dollars in everyone's paycheck. And we're picking up that part of the insurance. So based on that, I did some, some percentages of what that would mean if their salary was twenty-five thousand dollars, it'd be like a seven point five percent salary increase because you're getting the money.
Yeah, make a small correction. You said that puts it in everybody's paycheck.
Yeah, we don't have insurance.
But well under half of our people take that benefit.
Okay, but we need to take in consideration that that's a factor when we do this, right?
Okay.
You know, so, and, and so we have the, the, uh, collective bargaining people, that so anyhow, that would be a breakout of what it would look like. I just think we need to remember that we're doing, at least that part of money is going into people's paycheck when we decide what we do in terms of the health of the world. This is the highest premium.
This is, this is a family, this is a family.
Yeah, I, I, I assume it's a family thing right there.
Yeah.
This is the highest one.
For those who don't, uh, take advantage of the town's insurance. It's moved, right? I mean, I understand that it's a benefit, and if you take advantage of it, good for you, and yet if you don't, you kind of lose out on the other side of it.
On the insurance. But, so, then, but on the other hand, if, if you give, let's say, person A who's making forty thousand dollars a year a five percent increase, salary increase. They're effectively getting a nine point seven, but the other people only get the five, that they don't take the insurance. What are you doing then? You're giving them ten.
No. Answer your question. No, you know.
The way it is.
If, where, I mean, really, the issue is where do you, where do you balance this?
Yeah. So Bob, so I, all I'm saying is, I think we need to think about this as money that's going into paycheck.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree that we have to take this into account, but I don't think we can, we can put employees into two categories, those who, those who receive insurance and those who don't. I mean, I think we have to treat all employees equally regardless of their insurance status. And if somebody, if somebody is taking the town insurance and they're receiving that additional savings through the cost shift, is that what was intended by the, by the change in the plan?
Yeah, regardless of whether we were going to give it a cost of living or not. So that decision was kind of already made, distinct from any of this.
The employee has the choice whether to accept it or not.
Yeah.
And they want to get a benefit and they can accept the insurance.
And to take your point to the extreme, you could say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna really up this insurance benefit and then no one gets any raises. Well, that's no good for two-thirds of the employees. You know, I realize you're not proposing that extreme, but if you take the argument too far, that's where it goes.
Which brings us back to where we started, which is what, what COLA do you think we should be looking at?
Well, the social security was five point nine, but the Medicare part of it was fourteen percent.
Take with one hand and deal with the other.
When is our statement of wage going to affect the increase?
January one.
January one, January.
And then next year will appear.
Fourteen, twenty-five million.
Yeah, and so twenty twenty-three is when it counts out fifteen.
Because we're on fiscal year and they're on a calendar year, we plan for that, so our, um, our lowest possible wage right now is fourteen seventy-two, and it's a fourteen twenty-five minimum. So, I mean, we only have to get up twenty-eight cents to, in order to be in compliance next year on our lowest possible wage, so that, I'm sure you'll at least do that. But you've got a financial problem and you've also got a, um, a marketing personnel problem, so you have to balance those two. Come up with a number that doesn't feel like you're taking advantage of employees, but also a number that isn't gonna break the bank.
So five percent would be like, what the?
Like eighty, eighty thousand a year.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wrote that down. I, five percent feels reasonable enough for me. In terms of the eighty fifty, their salary's level, I think it does significantly give an impact number for staff. And I think that, you know, we, we've made a commitment to the salaries and I think that we should, and we are very vulnerable, as I've said before, to people leaving, so I think we need to continue to make a strong statement that we support the staff and, and that they're, you know, they're, how we do this work. You know, I would, I would, you know, I don't think we can come behind a five point nine or higher, but I think a five percent increase is a, is a really solid number.
Play devil's advocate. You go five percent increase and inflation doesn't hit what we thought. So next year, you pull back on that number?
Well, you probably wouldn't do a reduction, but you just wouldn't have much of a COLA next year.
And you could, you could even it all over the time.
Yeah. I mean, it used to be that everybody gave like a, between a two and a three percent raise every year, that was kind of like the standard fare. You know, and that was us for a long time as well. We were given a two and a half percent forever. You know, this year feels a little bit different, especially with the market. So I, I, I feel okay, you know, it's higher than we have to reduce to something that's been more traditional, more, I don't know if that's what the market does. I think, I think people understand the expectation. They see, can see where they are in this step and they understand that the town's trying to come behind something additional to the extent that they can. So I think that, um, this wouldn't surprise people if we had to make a difference.
Just for the record, five percent was your opinion, not the value?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, this has typically been a number that's plugged in your end of the budget process after you guys debate and talk with us. Are you, at this point, do you have a recommendation what we should be, and I think Don and Luke sort of are meeting, level service, level budget, level? Again, we, as advisors, we have it now, so any, anything that we're saying are individual opinions, but not, but not immediate opinions.
I think our first meeting was the twenty-fourth. So, you know, what we would typically do is, is, um, come up with that number or that, in that process and, and let folks know. Especially so that they can start to return on his budget sheets.
Like I underscore what Carol said earlier, um, there is, for a variety of reasons, a shortage of people with the kind of skills needed at the local level. And there's a fair amount of coaching going on right now among communities in central and western Massachusetts of department heads and, and qualified people. And so if we don't keep up, I think we can expect something like that to happen to the town, so.
I, I would say that in the general world, because it's the world I live, it's every man for himself and everybody, it's like nothing I've ever seen before.
I've never seen it either like this.
They're saying on the radio today that it's a, it's a good time to change your career. There's a lot of people, a lot of women's.
As long as you're sitting in the chair when the music starts.
Yeah, that is right, right.
So.
We'll, we're.
The discussion is, are you guys comfortable with that, you know, if we came up with that kind of range? Is that?
And are you okay with five percent?
Yeah, absolutely.
Kathy, you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Okay. You had a number that you can support, nine percent?
Um, I think we need to talk about it a little more, um, but I'm not opposed to it. You know, off the cuff, no, I'm not opposed to it, but I think it needs, it warrants a little bit more discussion.
Well, the problem with that is the departments were told to have their budgets turned in on January eleventh. And nobody's given them any guidance on this number yet. Obviously, we're going to have to give a little slack on that, but I think that if you want people to prepare a complete budget, you're gonna have to make a decision.
Well, in the past, sometimes it's.
Well, I, you know, perhaps we go with, you know, five percent and see where that brings us. And if we need, as a board, decide that we need to cut, you know, some things or, yeah, as we get more information that we need to make some changes, you know, so be it. But, you know, sure, let's go with the selectman's recommendation and, you know, see where that gets us.
Kathy, I think that, um, Doug, if we were suggesting for an advisory, if we could get an agreement out.
I'm sorry, Carol, I can't hear you. Say it again?
I think that was advisory suggesting that we move forward with that number. Um, and what we typically do is if, when we're running the numbers, if it's, if we can't afford it, we come back and, you know, we always set them up with a number knowing that if we have to pull back from that, we would have to pull back from that, given how the budgets play out. So I think it needs still have some latitude to do what.
Yeah.
And also in the past, you've also asked for budgets to be, pull the hours out separately from services, et cetera, so you could put that, you could see how the adjustment would impact the entire budget. And that might be a way for different departments to, okay, fine, you don't have a number, this is my need for services, these are my hours, my current rate, and whatever you add on there for multiplication will change my bottom number. We had that.
Yeah, no, we did that last year. It was because the Collins study was so late getting done, and that is a ton of extra work.
Well, yeah, but I think there's some advantage. It's also a good thing to see in different budgets, how the hours of.
I've got it. It's all on a spreadsheet. And that's part of the, the work that Bob charged me to do last year. You know, every physician has got a grade or rate, you know, their starting date, the first, you know, their historical salary and, and the hours in the account it goes to. It's a lot of work.
But Johnny, our, our budget sheets, I think, are pretty easy to see that breakout. We ask for hours and the rate, so if, you know, I think.
And that's what I'm saying, you have the flexibility to, to not actually have to make that right now because you have that.
No. Want it now, and if we have to change it, we'll figure out how to change it.
There's no reason not to make the decision now.
We're posted.
Right?
Yeah.
From the discussion with the staff and outside discussions last week, department heads are requesting, and I have it as the top item in my report tonight, an extension of the deadline for budget submission. They'd like the week, if perhaps.
Granted.
Maybe a little longer.
I'm sorry, granted by who? The Board of Selectmen or the Advisory Board?
Let's.
Well, your chairman just said it.
So you're just, um, we have a meeting scheduled, and so we just ask for each, for each department's budget a week before our meeting with them. If you guys ask for your direct reports for, for the eleventh, that's, that's different than advisory's request. So just to be clear, so there's, there's two kind of.
Two different schedules.
Yeah, two different schedules. So if, if you guys are willing to give a little bit on that, then that's great.
Two quick things. Number one is, uh, you, do you foresee the insurance, will people sign the insurance?
I would assume.
And is there any idea what the, is there any, talk a little, what's that percentage you, you thought would have any way of knowing that?
You know, and, and, yeah, there's, there's no get, it's miserable to predict, you know? And we have such, it's such a huge range in costs from family plan to, uh, you know, the individual plan, it's like, but yeah, you, if, when you up the benefit, I would assume that we'll have people who maybe are on their spouse's plan now that will find our plan more attractive and would open and roll the comps. They may sign up. No way to predict it.
You know, can I ask a question? I may have come late into the party here, but I, I was a little confused with respect to the cost of insurance. Are we trying to increase salaries for employees who have, or give, give them some, you know, additional income to offset the fact that they have not chosen, uh, to go with Hampton's health insurance plan? I, I, I was a little confused on that whole conversation initially.
No, you don't get a different salary if you have insurance.
So. Is the five percent trying to, um, equalize, if you will, the fact between people who have opted out of our insurance plan versus people who are, you know, are, have opted in?
No, it has no, nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with it.
Then I misunderstood. My apologies. You've answered my question. Thank you.
I think we changed the insurance thing to make ourselves more competitive. I think we changed the insurance thing to make ourselves more competitive with other communities and do what they want. The five percent thing, as I understand, like Carol and Doug, is more weighted to the inflation number we're seeing currently.
Okay.
Third, if you don't.
Sorry, thanks, no, I got it, thanks. My apologies.
The other, the other issue is, we'll probably have an increase in law and claims. Maybe even this year, because both self-starters people have, have.
Do we, you have an early estimate, yeah?
No, no, one, but I think it's gonna be, I think one of them are pretty costly, because one of the people that have determined, decided to. Seek accidents, over a hundred people in town. Express their opinion against it, so now they're seeking documents for who they spoke to with electronic communication.
That sounds a bit burdensome, but that's another issue for another day.
I was thinking, I asked Cliff, I guess we have twenty one thousand left in the school litigation, but I don't know if we could do anything with that.
That's, that's allocated for the school litigation, but I mean, certainly reallocated to the town meeting.
Yes, you can do it that way, it's not like you can do a line item transfer.
Like a transfer.
Yeah, because it was a special article.
But we can just take it on that account, create a new account. Oh, that's the discussion that comes up every once in a while, is, you know, should we have the one general legal fund? And there was a, there was a time a few years ago, when was it, planning on their own legal account? It was decided to not do that.
What was, you know, the, the school was a political decision to make sure that people understood the impact of the decisions they were making. So, you know, the rest of the stuff is totally unpredictable.
All right, just put it on your radar.
And obviously, you see, insurance costs, we already have a problem with negative situation on. Is it auto property basically?
Property, yeah, liable, yes.
As the fleet increases the cost.
All right, I think we have some direction.
All right, I don't think we, I don't think we touched on the issue of level service, level, level funding, level service. I mean, I don't see any reason to change the previous recommendations of level service, I mean. I mean, I think the town's at a good level in terms of what's being provided services. So if any departments will look at a change to level of service, that, you know, just ask that they put in an explanation of why, why the change. Does that sound reasonable?
So is the consensus to go forth and recalculate with the five percent goal?
Yeah.
Yes.
You got the word that the school's bond and the high school bond has reduced.
I have a little bit of money back for that.
Just saying from the meeting that the budget supplement is. The refinancing bond is two point one percent. Twenty two percent decrease. Twenty two percent on the annual cost?
Yeah, it was refinancing so well, I was thinking of things like that.
Yeah, I didn't hear twenty two percent, but I didn't see that we're gonna be getting that.
Sorry, you guys are really breaking up, I don't know if it's my computer or.
Yeah.
What, but.
The microphone is just typical. All right.
Those packets under your pad were intended for your members.
Is a. Earring.
Advisory, are we meeting next Monday? Oh, no, it's Martin Luther King Day, what about Tuesday or no?
The next week. The following week.
The following, okay, thank you. Day safe, everyone.
You want these, I have the full petition maps.
I'm here, I have three local questions, but.
I can do them all too.
Right here, should be on the call.
All right, we just opened the hearing. This is the hearing, I think the hearing is based on chapter one sixty six, section twenty two. Petition of the Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc. Formerly known as the New England Telephone Telegraph Company, for the placement of seventeen. J O poles on South Road, beginning at a point approximately two thousand one hundred twenty feet south of the center line. At the intersection of Jacob and Old, and Old Hammond Road, and continuing approximately five thousand nine hundred eighty five feet in the south direction.
So it should have been revised to sixteen last year.
Sixteen?
Yes.
And have the board been notified?
Yes.
Haven't received anything from you.
Full position.
Well, that has been replaced.
Number seventeen was petitioned for, I really love looking at.
That was the initial.
Yes.
I'm also. Hello, I'm also on the call, if you guys have any questions on the poll petition, my name's Reardon Hoffman, and I'm, work for the consulting form, for representing National Grid.
I know, I, I think all new poles are replacing some of the new poles.
Weird petition. So this is, is gonna be a, it's gonna be a replacement of some existing poles that are deemed too small for the, for the. Reconductor-ing that we plan on doing on South Road, but it is, as you mentioned before, it's sixteen new poles. And the joint, the J O just means that it is, the first forty feet is owned by National Grid, and then there's about a five foot. Ownership of the pole by Verizon or whoever the cable company is, so that they can install their equipment.
Just wanted to, so if it's a forty five foot pole, one guy owns forty feet of it, the other guy owns five?
Essentially, yeah, just to give the two companies all the room they need to put their attachments on there.
So of the sixteen poles, how many are new and how many are replacing them? Do I assume you're doing some for span distances, et cetera?
So of the sixteen, all sixteen are new, and I can actually do a quick count right now, if you want to get the total number of replaced poles. So this, these petitions are strictly for new poles.
I understand that all. Are there any poles coming up?
Uh, it does not look like any poles are being removed, so we'd just be replacing existing poles with new up, newer. Possibly taller poles, uh, and then in addition to those is the sixteen brand new poles for span distancing.
I spent our exclusive, we already have rights to do that, we are doing that, we're.
All jack, because that's just normal, yes, sixteen new poles that dress long spans. Like the last pole we did was a span, that was my guess, so.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, and these poles are just to alleviate the slack in the lines?
We're actually going up and boldish to make it more relaxed on that street, and they are very close.
It's just heavier, heavier line.
Yes.
And I know we heard back from the highway superintendent, he inspected, I believe you had markings and he looked over and said, why is that new? You know, staking system with the distance off the road, he was fine.
There was no visibility concerns, anybody's driveways or anything like that?
And their power will never go out there again?
Be a lot better than it was.
That's the plan.
Yeah, the answer.
I took a, I took a ride up there.
I just.
I didn't see you.
I was coming down your bowl.
Oh, that was you, okay. The convertible. I'll make a motion to approve of just sixteen new poles, who has presented.
Further discussion, all in favor?
I.
Thank you. Coming.
All right, entertainment license.
So you can come forward if you want, Mike, I don't know who else is.
Just back from vacation.
Yeah, reopen tomorrow, yeah.
How was that off today?
Pictures of your foods you put on there.
So what kind of entertainment do you have here?
Currently, we just do like, you know, some live entertainment Friday nights, you know, usually solo acts, not too many duos. Floyd, pretty regular.
The cover band.
Um, nothing, no.
And, uh.
Are you looking for the patio for next year or not? I mean, I didn't do it this past year, I don't, I don't know.
You've had it in the past.
I've had it in the past, you know, I would touch base with you guys, just like I would.
Is, is this the what outdoors here, six to nine P M? So does that?
Currently, we just do indoor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did outdoor a couple of years ago. You know, it was, it was, I get stuck there in the summer, you know, when it's real hot, I don't know, we want to sit out, you know, patios. They're busy early in the, in the season, then later in the season.
It's not a consideration that we had several years ago, because you're across residential, it's supposed to, say, La Corte, and it's all business around it, that's a lot. But that was our concern, I think we.
Yeah, we only had one night, we had a little issue, but they quieted right down.
No, no, we never ran into you, I said, that's why we kept it like eight o'clock or something like that.
Yeah, I think we said like eight thirty or nine, yeah, whatever, whatever it was.
So what's listed here, is this your request or is this previous?
That was just, you know, when they sent out all the forms, I just, you know, filled it out, sent it back in.
You should have the new application. That's, that was the current.
That's the current.
But, but the application behind it is what he's looking for now.
Yeah, I think one thing where it says usually Friday to maybe like go on the eighth or thirty Friday, are you looking for Friday? So the only time I'd ever really changed was every now and again, we'll get like a private party that wants to bring, can I bring a musician in, I'd say, yeah. You know, indoors. We could, you know, sometimes it's a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, doesn't happen often, it does happen every now and again.
Something was separated, I think.
Okay. And I would just, I know you said usually Fridays, but six is in Friday and Saturday.
Why don't we just put Friday, Saturday?
Good thing.
Six to ten, if you're doing, you're doing.
If to be honest with you, I was telling him the other day, I didn't even book anybody for this year. It's been becoming more of a problem for customers than, than, you know, a good thing, I guess, would say. So I didn't even book anybody, I mean, if we start getting some feedback that they wanted, then we'll do them, we'll have places, if not, then no big deal, you know?
Covered.
Covered, right, exactly, yeah, the hundred dollar now is more, you know, worth it than what we needed trying to get it all lined up quickly.
I hate to see it, yeah, you know, somebody in the future might say, oh my gosh, they get one one year, why is it?
Yeah, so I just figured we would throw our bases covered, this way, if we want to start.
Well, we lost the buck.
I'm sure that's not gonna change the budget too much. But yeah, it's just easier for me that way.
I'll move to grant Casabella Entertainment License from six to ten P M on Fridays and Saturdays. On January first, Sunday, Thursday, indoor, indoor.
And then if I want to do outdoor, I'll just touch base with, like, Sunday, 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 I'll just tell people though.
Three second, okay. All in favor? It's just, are we saying this one or are you gonna?
No, I'll, I'll put new ones and then I'll get them.
That's fine, that's enough.
All set?
Get ready for tomorrow.
All right, well, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, that's the special forum.
Reconsider that poll down or?
I'll see you guys.
Reconsideration.
Someone like Kachida here?
Is someone from Great Horse here?
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Brian.
That's Lynn, that's that, of course, Red Rivers.
That's me.
Mark.
Unfortunately, I don't have Mr. Flynn. That will have a club every now and then.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Oh, just kidding, Mr. Flynn, all right.
And we have. So you know what the issue was, the summer, sometimes, the issue was in the summer, sometimes we would get complaints that they're going past the nine thirty. Time.
Outside?
Outside.
To be honest with you, Mr. Devport, we really don't go past nine thirty, we may have, we have all of our vans in at nine o'clock outside. We may have a guest that says, hey, play one more song, and they play one more song, and it extends till nine oh five, nine ten. Uh, but I could certainly, uh, sit here and tell you truthfully that we do have all of our vans signed up and contracted until nine P M.
Because, uh, is, is the door, are the doors open sometimes at night or somewhere, is that it?
Uh, no, sir, because even, uh. In the summer, everyone sits outside unless we have a rainy night, or it's, you know, it's just not comfortable to sit outside, so. Honestly, our summer entertainment, I'd say, gosh, eighty five percent of it takes place outside.
So we got a complaint on. This was at twenty two thirty five hours, which would be like eleven thirty. Right, twelve.
Twelve o'clock.
Yeah, twenty, twelve, eleven o'clock, eleven thirty. Yeah, twenty thirty, you know, that twenty two oh seven, that was, uh. Wasn't data. Yes.
I would assume that probably Saturdays.
Oh, yeah, ten seventeen twenty one and seven twenty three twenty one, that's a Friday.
Friday and Saturday.
One Friday.
Two Friday, two the same day.
Two Friday, yeah, two Fridays. And, uh. And there was a wedding, which.
Yes, sir, that, that would be, the only thing I could say is if we had guests at the wedding and. You know, they're walking out the doors and they have the doors open for a second, and they have a van playing inside. Really honest, that's the only way I could see us getting a noise complaint, because, uh, again, we do not have a plane outside of the club on ten seventeen.
Yeah, it was, it was a disturbance. Probably don't have a lot to do with it. So the licenses, license we have is Monday through Saturday, outdoor, school site until nine thirty. Outdoor entertainment, one, Monday through Saturday, outdoor entertainment, pool science until nine thirty.
Okay.
And indoor, indoor entertainment, twelve to twelve, with doors twelve.
That's current, that would be at the banquet.
Right? And that's what the same thing you want.
Uh, be flexible on a nine thirty.
What do you mean?
Be outside until nine thirty, we can call it outside till nine.
Nine?
Yes, sir. That's not this simple.
That's not listed here, though, I'm putting it in.
How often do events go past ten, eleven o'clock at night, like, do you use it right up until midnight?
At the clubhouse. Rarely do we have, I mean, big events that we have throughout the year, hundred fifty, two hundred people. Really just your major holidays, July fourth, Memorial Day, such as that, at our banquet facility, pretty much every Friday, Saturday, we'll have a wedding at our banquet facility. The front doors on. The front doors on the deck are, are pretty far away from the band. Our band setup is generally kind of in the center of the banquet hall. So it, you know, you got a pretty good amount of room in between the actual playing where the noise, the quote unquote, escape out. So that's, that's really where the late night music would occur at. Again, that's always inside, but obviously guests do go outside, smoke a cigarette or just go outside and hang out. So as the doors open up, that's where the volume may escape from.
What would you say most events go to at night?
At our bank facility, yes, sir. I'd say, gosh, probably sixty, seventy percent of the weddings, I'd like to get them at night. The second end time behind that would be eleven P M. Other than midnight, most weddings will end by eleven P M.
And this is Monday through Saturday. You know, Sunday, you need a separate license.
Yes, sir.
Would you be opposed to Monday through Saturday at eleven P M, seven midnight? Um, would that affect your operation month?
I mean, brutally honest with you, we've got about seventy weddings that are booked for next year and some of them are going to midnight. They've already booked a band and what have you. So brutally honest, yes, sir, it would impact, it would impact their experience.
I think if we just make some notes to try to make sure everything is cut by the times listed, we don't get any calls, these reports still something like, a little pass of date, we have to make sure the doors are definitely staying closed.
Mr. Vass, may I recommend one thing?
Yes.
That we would be happy to do, honestly. I certainly have the staff to do it. We'd be happy to buy a decimeter and if it would be advantageous for us to monitor the decimal level from the road that goes in front of the club. And keep a log of that, I'd be happy to, to do something such as that. And should we ever encounter a, a situation where we need to review that data, we'll have it on hand.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a good idea. Obviously, you're being proactive with that.
Yes, sir.
I just, I'm trying to look out for the residents. I've spoken to them a lot personally and they're. Well, some of them enjoy the music. Some of them are, you know, early to bed type of people.
Sure.
So it does act like a amphitheater almost because it's up on the hills. Everything, no matter what decimal is up top, it's, it's just gonna cascade down. Okay? So I think that was some of the residents' concerns was just the, the amplification and that cascading effect of the audio coming down to their house. You know, some of the people I've talked to said when they go inside and close the doors, they don't hear anything. Yeah, some people like to sit outside at night and have a quiet. That's what I was asking, if there's something we can do to kind of help them out a little bit, you know, a little fluctuation. But I understand you've already got stuff booked for.
Yes, sir.
The next year, and obviously weddings are probably backed out this year because of last year.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's gonna be a challenge in here. We don't find staff, so.
I think we need to keep an eye on it and monitor it and make sure we're not, you know, disturbing the neighbors, you know, as much as possible.
Absolutely.
Motion. Uh, motion to approve. Great horse for entertainment license, pool side, outdoors until nine P M, Monday through Saturday. And indoors with the doors closed. Twelve P M to twelve A M, Monday through Saturday. You will need a separate Sunday license.
Yes, sir.
And you're gonna monitor the decimal meter you set.
I can, if you wish.
That's why I keep a log.
Is, does the town have any set decimal levels that can't be exceeded at those times? As a guideline?
I thought we had something because remember.
Just for point of information, Todd and I did the thing in Casabella.
There is.
There is.
We'll get into you.
Yeah, no worries. I, we want to make sure that the, the town is comfortable and that obviously residents are, you know, comfortable in their house as well. So again, anything we can do to, uh, to move the needle in that direction, we'll certainly be happy to keep a log in and make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It's the same as, uh. Saturday, six to nine, outdoors, July.
You know, when you say there are three non-representative.
Pretty good over there.
And if you have any complaints.
No, nobody does.
I think you're probably gonna hear the same kind of thing as Mike Connor said, you know, they're really taking it easy for steering back.
Motion to approve entertainment license for La Cachina DeAmpton House. Thursday through Saturday, six P M to ten. Six P M to ten A M indoors, is that right?
The application should be this year's application, no?
Okay, here we go. Seven to ten P M. Live music Friday and Saturday at the bar and outside weather committee during the weather months.
For the discussion, all in favor?
All motors.
All right. Hearing's well, no, I closed it over here. This is a new hearing. New hearing. This next one on the agenda is. God's hearing. This is, uh, open the hearing, this is the hearing. Under chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven regarding. Dog complaint. The board has two, has three options. We can do nothing. We can plan a dog, a nuisance dog and have some better remediation or dangerous dog and have some additional remediation. Parties here, medals. Yes. Just for the record, we have to, we have to take a, an oath here. Can you give your names to Pam, everything, Floyd?
Murray Minos. May, I know that.
I'm Rusty Terry.
So, uh, if you, you sound swear the testimony you're about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Given with Shelley.
So Jason, the next one. Summer sixteen, their dogs attacked his chickens and children. So the first time we walked over and talked to them, they were playing fetch with the dogs in the front yard and they said that they wouldn't do that where they, they have a fence in there in the back and they would keep them in the backyard. And so I asked them what happened the second time and they said they had taken them to training and they had special training collars on, so they're trying to fetch them in the front yard together to make them away. Jason could see it happening and his camera was literally both times.
How many chickens did you move?
Three chickens and one duck.
Were they fenced at station or they?
So I have like a, a fence and an area and then I usually let them out in the yard. And that's, yeah, that's what they, I got. Yeah, yeah.
And your dog was, they had collars, one of them was electric collars or?
Well, yeah, if I could, we're not trying to mitigate our dogs' responsibility. This is our fault totally. Our dogs robbed our property and they're on Mr. Ross' property and, 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 but we, I, the letters of the receiving, we have two German Shepherds, one's a male, they're both rescues. And the male dog is ninety-eight point nine percent, is the best dog you've ever seen in your life. The female, the second one, which is Dixie dog from Texas, and she's the one. They shoot him over there. The second, the second attack, she followed her.
He followed her.
He actually did join in and, and I'm horrified by that. But I could tell you honestly, if it wasn't for the female dog, Mr. Ross is never a problem for our male dog. It wouldn't happen. He just doesn't, he listens, he stays with us, he stays on our property.
Kind of like an Adam and Eve thing, right?
She's been leave a whole lot. He's been out of it very well, but we, we have no idea what happened to him this last time. We are at the point that we want to surrender her. We just need some help because at this point, there's nobody that will take her. And we've called Bacon and we've called, um, Tommy, J O Connor, whatever it is, we've gotten in touch with the rescue person that we got her from. I got in touch with Shepherds of New England. I offered them a thousand dollars to take her and because of COVID, they're all backed up. And what, what's, what's happening is that, like, she is, she's a runner and even if people come over, we have to hold her, let her in the house, let everybody in the house and make sure the doors are shut. If somebody, God forbid, forgets something in their car and they open the door, she's gone. And we brought her to a trainer and we got the electric collar. This trainer showed us how to train her with the collar, with treats, with everything else and.
Yeah, I had the collar on her wrong. I was trying to give her a shot and she, but it wasn't stopping her. So I believe the collar was on incorrectly. It's my fault.
And we just, we don't want this to happen again. We don't want it to happen again. I, we are at the point that we want to surrender her. And I don't know, you know, if, if there's anything, Shelley, you could, I mean, I know I reached out to you about, you know, what could we do, you know? But nobody will take her.
Have you advertised her like on Facebook?
We could tell our friends.
Well, yeah, no, I haven't put it out on Facebook, but we, you know, we have sons and everything. And if any of your friends can, your friends take her, you know, that sort of deal.
Did you contact Westfield Animal Shelter? Because they, they do a lot with rescues too.
All my friend Steve's daughter works there. She's aware of it. Apparently, that's not an option. My friend asked his daughter, she's, uh, assisting open cross or in Westfield.
Before you guys go, like, I just wanted to say, you know, it's. It's just a little frustrating when I have like my own animals and I run around with my property stuff and I have a dog come over and it's frustrating when you feel like you can't let your dogs out and the chickens, as weird as that might sound, but. For this, for you guys to have to surrender an animal, I don't want that to happen at all.
We have to.
We don't want to. If you feel that way, but I don't want you to be doing it for what happened and I don't think it's worth it one bit.
No, we have to. It's not fair for your animals to be hurt in your.
I could look, I can tell you that the male dog's not gonna be back. I can't promise that because it, it's like, it's, it's like a fish is gonna.
Three years.
Three years.
We've only had her since April.
You've never had a problem.
No, I didn't even know they had dogs, to be honest with you, until that happened, but.
But we can't, I can't live like this. I can't live with, and it's not only because of the chickens. She'll run the other way sometimes. She'll run towards our emerges sometimes and we're like fools out there, like, like, like ridiculous fools that we can't control the dog, you know?
We don't know how old she is. We didn't know even what breed she is.
And it's just not, it's just not hap, it's just not happening.
We got her, she didn't have any house feeders. I've never been in a house in our life.
Everybody that comes over says that she has grown like a thousand percent, like, oh my goodness, this dog is so good, but.
She'll sit and she'll lay down and she'll listen to commands and stuff now, but when she wants to run, she's gonna run. That's how she is.
And we feel absolutely terrible. Absolutely, because we know those are your animals. We were told that from the very first start. Those are your animals, you know, and how devastating is that? It may seem like a chicken to somebody else, but that's your, those are your pets.
I saw, I saw what I was, you saw that film. I was there, it was horrible.
But, and so that's not the only reason. She'll go the other way too. We can't be running around town trying to catch our dog. But we don't know, you know, it's like. We don't know what to do with her because she can't get out of the fence.
She can.
She gets out. She'll take underneath it.
They both, they're both are strong. They're like.
Or bust through the bottom. They have a white vinyl fence.
We were sitting on the front porch one day, got a little drink at night, all of a sudden he comes around on the side house and what happened? It was like the cartoon character, they did a whole, I'd had her place the whole one. Yeah, you've been through it. You want to hang out with us, you want to be out back by themselves.
So what do you do with her now?
Well, we have, we have a runner in the backyard, so we're putting her on the runner in the backyard. They're not playing outside at all, not playing out front at all, but the fear is still there that every, just now leaving tonight, my son and his girlfriend in the house, well, like, all right, you know, keep her in there, keep her, because she's right behind you. She just wants to get out the door. And it's almost like you're, you know, you're, you're backing up getting into the house. We have a grandson.
And they're high-dried dogs. They want to run, they want to play. They're just, they're not like laying on corner kind of dogs.
How is she with people, like the kids or grandson?
She wants to play all the time, you know?
Very gentle dog. She'll lay with the, the couch.
She sleeps with me at night, but we just.
She's a rescue, you don't know her.
No, she's so, when we say she's come a long way, she was very, very timid when we got her, very skittish. A lot of anxiety, backing up from people, the whole thing, you know, and, um, he's a, he was a dog handler for ten years. He's a retired police officer from Westfield. And, uh, he was a dog handler and he went to dog handling school and we took her to our trainer who owns his own kennel and everything else. And it's just like this, she has her own mind and we don't know what she, her, for the first three years of her life.
She's made it to survive. I mean, before we got her, we don't know. We had like a woodchuck or some kind of large game under her shed. She dug it out, pulled it out and killed it, it was as big as her. She's the Terminator. It's not just these, these animals. I mean, she's, she's killed mice, mice were on her shed.
She'll catch a bird in the air.
Yeah, she got a bird in the air one day, trying to take off. She's the Terminator.
Have you, Jason, have you got compensation, loan compensation or?
I mean, they weren't that expensive to begin with, so I, I don't think that's really, that's kind gesture and everything, but I don't think that's really necessary.
And I think the first day you guys came over, we said that to you too, because you were gonna take the dog to the vet and like, we'll pay for anything that has happened. It is our responsibility.
So what are we gonna do?
You can't keep like a gate at the front door.
I, we have to get rid of her. We have to get rid of her. We're, we're, we're out of all the options. I can't, I can't live, you know what I'm saying? I can't live like this. I really can't.
Then he can have a lot more freedom too, because he is, he getting punished and he's not really the one that's the problem. And he's getting locked down like a prisoner, you know? It's not fair to him.
But we just don't know.
Shelley, what are your recommendations?
I really don't know. I mean, I told her like they came to jail. I want to take her on Facebook, go back to the breeder. Breeder, breeder won't even answer me.
It's not breeding, we went through German Shepherd.
The rescue lady.
We don't want to get a, a pet star dog. We don't want to get a breeder dog. We wanted to get a, you know.
Well, none of these places will take a dog at all.
No, I, I even did Shepherds of New England and this lady spoke to me for an hour and a half on the phone. And it got down to the end of the call where I was like, I was like, can I, I'll give you a thousand dollars. You know, I'll give you a thousand dollars to take her because we just, we, we don't want this on our, on our shoulders right now. We don't, we don't want all this.
Had we not told about her getting out and hurting animals, that maybe what might have, but we, we were trying to be honest. We don't, we're trying to pass up, you know, a problem on somebody else. We're trying to be up above all of the people.
And I've never surrendered a dog in my whole life, never. I mean, I've always had dogs until they died, I, you know.
Well, one thing we can't do is give it a dangerous dog, because when you do that, it can't leave town, right?
Oh, it can't leave town?
If we give it a dangerous dog, it can't leave town.
It, but it's only dangerous to prey animals. I mean, she's not gonna hurt her.
Loses dog, which will be, we can do some remedial, we could do some remedial thing. I guess there'd be the thing is try to get someone to take it.
And just keep her on the run.
Keep it on the run.
We can't, we can't keep her, no, until you. Oh, yes.
Try to get someone to, to take our rescue plane on the rescue place or something like that. We'll put it on the agenda for a follow-up in a couple of weeks.
If anybody.
Yes, for sure.
If anybody knows of anybody, or hears of anybody, or thinks of anything else.
The right situation, whatever she's.
I don't know why Dakin can't take her. They only service Springfield, Holyoke, and something else, I don't know.
She seems like Dakin should take her, T K O does only, only services those, Dakin should take, why do they say they don't?
Um, I forget.
Well, isn't that a kill shelter room? I don't want to bring her to a kill shelter, she's gonna.
Is that a kill shelter? I don't know. My son called both those places.
Yeah, they're not gonna kill her. She's a nice dog.
My son called both, um, Dakin and, um, O'Connor for me.
No, I've.
Two weeks, three weeks.
And I, I would personally reach out to Dakin and Westfield. Not, not the rumor mill or through the word of mouth, I would, just a big call.
We'll, we'll, we'll continue it for two weeks to the twenty-fourth, and see how you are, and see how things are going now. And Jason, thank you for doing that. Actually, one of the best.
We're not gonna sit here and act like it didn't happen, you know what I'm saying? We're not, we're not, we're not for those people, you know?
All right, thank you, see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
She's the cutest little thing too you'd ever wanna see.
Well, basically, uh.
Well, good luck, hopefully make something.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Uh, let's see.
Okay, you want to see, um. Looking for the, the. Here we are. I've got it. Or appeals. Where? Can you see it here?
Can you expand it?
Is this the two-two-zero-one-zero?
Here it is. Can you see it now?
Looks like everybody's up to this, they're all up to date.
Right, it was just, it was Dick who was out, so.
Well, did we do a formal one, or do you, you just updated?
I, you know, when I saw.
A twenty-one.
That we were gonna reappoint him, I went in and talked with him. He said, I said, what's your term? And he said, well, I don't know that we really have established terms. And so.
So twenty-four sounds like.
In, in talking with Pam, we, we said, there are a couple of boards, including, actually, the advisory board, where the terms really, uh, don't seem to exist, and so we thought, let's establish terms. And, uh, have a, a complete file of boards and committees, and have, uh, have terms. Roll it up to.
Okay, let's see.
Uh, which?
So, looks like you have four full-time members and two alternates. Maybe we could pick a four or five if we could. We could also reach out to Jed and ask him if one of his alternates would like to be a full-time member, so we have the odd number if he likes.
Um, you know who I don't see, I don't know if this is the most current, Bob, because I've saved mine to OneDrive.
This is, this is the most current.
Okay, then we should have.
This is the one that you saved last.
Okay, there's a, uh, friend left me up, and there's another gentleman who's been an alternate for some time, and it's not just, it's not Garrett.
Pam, here, here's, here's the file. This look, this is the, the, the one that was saved, eleven-thirty.
Yeah, I see one up above.
Did you see one up above that's saved more fre- more recently?
One and four.
What's that?
Second one down, but.
Does he need anything, or is he, would you mind looking into a fifth member? Okay, we can. So we don't need to point it. Doesn't appear so, but I'd like to, I'd like to.
But what we're trying to do is, is to establish terms for everybody, and then print this, and then make it available to the public as a way of trying to.
But the reason they started is Joanne said they had to reappoint because they have.
Right, well, she, I, she gave me the appointment slips, and then we're all up to date with the exception of Dick.
Yeah.
But then we're showing here, but you show we're here.
That's not the latest, Bob, but just not.
Now I have the latest. This is, this is the, the one that you've, you established last.
Okay.
Here it is. Shifts it a little bit.
Then we should have another member.
Well, let me just make one point. You've got it down for twenty-four. My memory's not that great, but I don't recall voting, or extended it down to you. So, twenty-four may have been the only time that it would be, and I would make a motion to reappoint Richard Patel to Board of Appeals until whatever, for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-two.
June thirty, what?
Twenty-twenty-four.
Well, isn't that what that says?
I know, but I can't recall, I was making that motion in the summer, so let's just make sure. And, uh.
Maybe you can boil it up.
But there is, and that there is, that's not a member.
And like that, Tom, Mr., if you can invite Jed to a future meeting, so we can talk about standing for, we'd like to get a fifth full-time member. All right, ARPA, ARPA, that's basically, I just put that on there because we got the final, final thing.
Final rule.
Final rules, money, did we get them copied, everybody, here?
I, I watched a, uh, Zoom call today late this afternoon, that was sponsored by the Treasury Department, where they went through the final rule and the changes between the final and the interim rule, which was issued last fall. Uh, I will send you, I was thinking at the end of it, it was very worthwhile, I will send the board. The, uh, I think there, there are three present, three of these presentations are coming. And if you have a chance, I really urge that you, you take a look at this, because it, it really rolls out where we are and what we can, what we can and can't do. Uh, there's three hundred and fifty billion for state and local governments. This is the interesting thing about ARPA. We can, if we can show where we have lost revenue, uh, we can use ARPA funds to replace the revenue. And then, we can use those revenues for a wide variety of government activities. What I'm going to submit to them is that we lost revenue uh, because our ambulance service was curtailed for much of two thousand twenty because of COVID. We've lost a portion of our ambulance, of the ambulance revenue. And I'd like to replace that with ARPA funds, which we could then use for other purposes. Other than that, they give you the opportunity, if you're a larger community, you can take what, what amounts to a standard deduction of ten million dollars. Well, obviously, we, that doesn't apply to us. We have to show where we have lost revenue. Reality is, that other than lost business uh, on our ambulance, uh, service, we have not lost revenue.
I guess, like, to explore that further, first off, since we haven't seen a fine report of the ambulance oversight committee anyhow.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure where we lost revenue, except that they didn't bill enough to give us money back on our thing.
Right.
And you're saying you can make a case that that's because of COVID, people weren't sick enough?
No, their business was off, at, at the height of COVID, their business was off something like forty-eight percent. Uh, now it's back, but it's still off, uh, somewhere in the twentieth percent top.
Because they only get paid if you transport.
Right.
If you go to someone's house, and they say, I don't wanna go in the ambulance, they don't get paid. Don't say that, it's probably in the report we haven't got.
Other than that, it's water, sewer, and broadband, and premium pay, or, uh, emergency responders, so. But it still is, it's, it's worth watching. Um, so that.
Okay, but since we, I'd like to hold off just a bit because we, we're committing to a fiver, which is great. We don't really have a good sense of financing for that, so I wouldn't want to take away from that pot.
Right.
Until we really get a sense of where we're going with that.
Um, the only reason why I thought of this is that, in the last session we had with advisory committee people, I think it was Doug who said, I would like to use ARPA to cover as much as possible of existing projects, if we can.
Right.
If this backdoor approach works, then we will have some funds that we could put towards existing projects. I'm, I'm not doing anything in a rush, we have a, yeah, several years, uh, to expend this money. Right now, we're waiting for, uh, rules on the new infrastructure legislation. And we're waiting for, uh, what the governor and the legislature have done. Uh, they received separately eight billion in ARPA money, and the governor is, is proposing to give back like another shot of like three and a half billion to the cities and towns. I don't know what our allocation will be from that, but we're gonna get more money from that. Uh, and we'll see what the rules are. So I think we're gonna have a number of pots of money to, to, uh, uh, to use for projects that, you know, we, we think are necessary, so.
Next policy? So basically, I checked with, uh, with Jane, you know, we have the policy in place for masking in town hall. Uh, you saw the numbers, obviously, we're seeing the spike, hopefully drop away. My, our recommendation is to, this is echoed by people in town hall and at the senior center. They'd like to see it continue for another week and have reassessment.
Will be, selectmen's reports?
But we're happy to see twenty-twenty-two come along. We have, uh, I believe, a COA meeting tomorrow morning. There's a planning board meeting on Tuesday. The previous, we're gonna enjoy a mutual finance meeting on Thursday. John, anything scheduled for Friday?
I don't know. Yeah.
I get it. Library on Saturday delivers early.
The next week, we have strategic planning on Wednesday. No news there.
I'll give you a quick, uh, update on the water project, and I wanna thank, uh, John for his attention today, it's been terrific, John's after. Um, all the households been connected, I chatted with most of the members, and they're seeing a little air pockety type thing, which is typical when you extend that much line to it. They're very impressed with the quality, obviously, from what they had before. Very appreciative of what the town has done, Jane, you may have talked to Cheney as well. I think she was extremely appreciative of what's, you know, going forward. The only connection I think we have left is the town hall. And, uh, that'll be with the next couple of days.
We had a mishap, you know about that mishap.
So, you know, we're staying on top of that. What was the bell? Righty-tighty, lefty-loose, you learn those things. Right, John? Thank you. Thanks.
And something that really needs to be, uh, considered, while the alarm blared throughout the townhouse, nobody hears it but us. So, should that happen, and nobody's here, and all the tree falls in the woods and. It used to just rang here.
Yeah, that's a question, perhaps, uh, Jane, to reach out to Tony and see if that's something that could be echoed over to the dispatch center as well, like, just like we have the well, the, uh, well, whoever it is.
Well-designed.
They are replacing the camera system at the town hall with regular cameras paid for by dispatch. And, uh, that'll also.
I think John and I had that question before too, the, the pump house, if we can get that transferred to, to Tony too, because I think right now it just comes to the town hall, right?
Right, I think there's also.
John, talk about that.
Well, first of all, John, you had talked about possible upgrade for the pumping station as part of this project, you looked, uh, just because you get more volume. Yes, so. We're gonna review that, I think, like we discussed before, we may want to replace the generator, because it's twenty-two years old. It's still working, but they have an opportunity to upgrade it to more reliable. I think, based on our comments from Eddie before, but lots.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Yeah, right, I mean, it's a noble thought, probably get it on order, might be there before Don and I retire.
Minister, report. Okay, uh, extension of budget submission deadline, the advisory committee has given permission for the departments under their jurisdiction. Uh, I'm not clear if the selectmen are willing to do the same. Jane and I were discussing the budget prior to her, uh, taking the time off. We'll get back into that, uh, this week. Come up with the budgets that the selectmen typically control. But obviously, we can't do it by tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Uh, contract negotiations, uh, were scheduled for last Tuesday, but because of the cancellation of the meeting, uh, I've, I've moved it to tomorrow. Uh, we'll discuss that later tonight. We have a contract negotiation with the highway superintendent and the highway union. I've given you copies of a red line employee handbook, which I put tentatively on the agenda for next week. Also, that board committee and commission handbook, the, the draft that I sent to you, like to review that with you, see what your thoughts are. Uh, CARES Act is done, December thirty-first was the final, the money has been spent. Last I checked, we were down to like five bucks in the account, so.
So, thing where you say CARES money is spent, like, we talked about the Lucas thing coming out of that.
Yes.
It's encumbered or spent?
Spent.
Oh, so we, you came in.
Right.
Oh, that was cool.
Um, we are going to make space, we are making space for the health agent and the public health nurse, uh, to operate from town hall in the office formerly used by the treasurer. Uh, the new veterans agent, Michelle Barrett, will be set up at T W B in an office. The, uh, superintendent has agreed to allocate the space over there. Uh, the new phone system is, is, we're all set up, we're just waiting for the devices to be delivered and replacement. I sent you a copy, uh, of the list that, uh, we will be receiving. We had it, yes, I did.
I got it.
All right, we'll, we'll send it. Um, shared health meeting was held today, we are, I think at the end, we have the final agreement almost ready, and we'll bring that on the board's agenda. Uh, as you know, we did receive finally the one hundred thousand dollar earmark. Uh, it came through the DOT, state DOT. Um, contract is signed, and tree warden has been advised that he can spend a hundred thousand, uh, to take down hazardous trees. Uh, the town hall is going to be sanitized regularly at seven AM on Tuesdays until the COVID surge is over. Uh, we did get the cybersecurity grant, I sent that out to you late today. Uh, that'll be basically training for town employees to recognize when, uh, scammers are out there or ransom. Uh, scammers are out there or ransomware people are out there trying to break into our system.
What do we have to do with that? I didn't understand. I got a couple of emails. Am I supposed to, am I supposed to do something or sign up or something?
I don't think so. I uh. So I have to, I have to send back documents.
Yeah, you have to send some.
Right, yeah, I'm gonna do it tomorrow morning. And also the agenda, the pack and the posting issues, as you know. We can go back to keeping our files. All those files on the server. Uh, you could get access with your home computers. Using the VPN, you know, virtual. Private network. Access into the server when you need it. I didn't find that all that convenient, but it works. It's uh, secure. And. When Jane or when, when Pam saves a file. It'll go right to the server and she will not have the problem that she's had from time to time with the OneDrive. And, and not being able. To save correctly on the OneDrive. What I'd like to do. Is to talk to Burim about. Mirroring the server and the OneDrive. So you'd have a choice and I would have a choice. I, I find it very convenient to go. To go to the OneDrive. For example, all I have to do. Is do this. One click. And there you have the whole OneDrive, all, all the OneDrive files from here, right there.
See, my problem is that is we're utilizing the OneDrive law. We're utilizing the OneDrive law. Because Bob has access to his OneDrive.
Yes.
I don't have access to his OneDrive unless I log in to Bob.
But I can understand why that's not. If Bob shared the access by sending me. Has he not like added your email to the share?
I, I have no access to any folders on the OneDrive. I, I've said that since I started.
For instance, just tonight when Bob was looking at the boards and I went over, oh, okay, I was looking at the same file you're looking at. And see, I like the OneDrive thing. A, I don't have a VPN. I'm not here for the king for VPN. Remember the town paid for it. And I'd like the idea of, especially at the budget time. That we're all looking at the same budget packet that the different boards are trying to use. Now like, oh, you just got the latest policeman, but Don, you don't have the latest policeman. They're all in one file. Very advantageous for all to be at the same minutes and go back to history. There they all are. Now, I understand server and OneDrive, we're talking the same thing. Your idea for Burim? Yeah. Maybe that answers your question right there. I hope it does. I hope we can set up a mirroring system. That way you'd have your choice of how to utilize the files. And then you're into a rights thing, but I talked about this last year. If you can have folders on the OneDrive that have different rights, so for instance. You invite the advisory. Right. To look at the budget. And FY twenty three. You know, budgetary, because they should see the same files we're seeing. That's it.
We'll put this on the next agenda, but this guy's chair.
I know, yeah, okay, fine, yeah, good. Uh, that concludes my report.
And Don, you have issues accessible.
Sometimes I get into it, sometimes I can't.
Right. This is a petition. I changed to sixty.
That's my report, if you want to. Uh, close the meeting and we'll go to executive session.
So, uh, I would like to move to executive sessions. To discuss uh. Legal action by storage facilities with the town council. And also to discuss uh. Collective bargaining with the board, with, with the highway superintendent and the highway union. Uh, because both of them will.
Since there's been no action on that, you know, I talked to Mark and I know that you had canceled the meeting last week. And we just kept that until the actual job has a chance to. Talk to. We can do that. I mean, I, when I usually. You basically said it. Hey, Bob's gonna be talking about. Okay. You know, when they come in tomorrow, the first thing I'm going to say is if you bring a list of things you want to talk about.
So, stand motion to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation. Uh, I ruled an open meeting, have a definite effect on the bargain. Uh, Lydia's position of okay, now it's regarding self storage.
So. Don, when I.
Down, down, for I.
Without return of oversight.